Selen City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:33 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Moll, council members Dillon, Gearbaum, McClellan, Rhodes, Tahar, and CEO. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer, business ambassador Bennett. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So move?
Move as submitted, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Thank you. Is your second? Seconded by Councilman CEO. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As having the motion carries unanimously. We only have one discussion item this evening, and that's the redevelopment readies communities. Ms. Bennett, do you want to start us off this evening?
Sure.
Thank you.
So redevelopment ready communities is a program that Todd and I intend to train on, and we met Michelle. And it's basically, I'm going to give you my opinion of it, and then we're going to turn it over to Michelle, who's going to do a presentation of what it really is, and then what we, you know, want to know. We went through this best practice. There are six different best practice steps to make sure that we are being transparent, to make sure that we're making the proper zoning regulations, and that our master plan includes things for redevelopment, that our timeline to do all this stuff is in a time efficiency manner, that we're being transparent about everything. So that, that's just some of the few. I'm going to go through each one of those steps.
Yes, I guess.
Okay. So I don't want to take away your time. So basically, what it's doing is having, in my opinion, another set of eyes come in to make sure that we're doing everything we can to attract a developer who may not be looking at Selen for whatever reason. And then part of the program is, if we go through the certification process, then we would get some marketing from MEDC and this program. When Todd and I went to the training, we both felt that a lot of the things we currently do, I did do, downloaded the self-evaluation, but I need to sit down, because what I think is included in the master plan, I want to verify with Gary, and that will take a process for us to sit down with other staff and go through that process to see really where we're at. But we have heard from many developers that we're very, you know, we're very user worker friendly and stuff like that. So I kind, what Todd and I thought we would do is have Michelle come in and kind of give her the overview, and then we could ask her questions and things like that. So I'm going to let Michelle from MEDC take it over.
Sure.
I might have been a tunt her last night.
It's Michelle Parkman.
Okay.
I'm from the UP, so a little unique, little unique last thing. Can you get the, I have a presentation. Oh, he's got it. Okay. So I'm the manager of the redevelopment ready communities program at the Michigan Economic Development.
Michelle, I'm sorry, would you mind speaking into that microphone? Thank you so much.
No, no problem. I have been with the program for almost three years now. I started out as a planner with RRC and took over managing the program in April. So how many of you are familiar with redevelopment ready communities?
Somewhat.
Somewhat? Okay. Well, we'll give a little overview today, and you'll have a great idea if you're interested at the end. So you'll notice on the bottom of the presentation, we've got both the Mishda logo as well as MEDC. So you may or may not be aware, community development from Mishda, as well as MEDC, were realigning and combining into one unit. And that covers the technical assistance programs, redevelopment ready communities, as well as Michigan Main Street, which Selen is now a master level Main Street community, as well as our incentive programs, the Community Revitalization Program, Community Development Block Grant, Brownfield TIF, and Public Spaces Community Places. So that realignment was really to, in an effort to provide better service to our customers, so our communities. You would have one point of contact through your community assistance team, and you will be getting a new community assistance team specialist as of August 1st. So just to really try and provide a seamless point of contact, we really looked at streamlining our own processes and, and better providing service to our communities. So as you may know, Michigan Main Street is going through a four-point refresh. And how does this, how does this fit in with RRC and what we're talking about? We're working really closely with Michigan Main Street to align the two programs. So as the treasurer mentioned, I think that there are a lot of things that Selen is already doing based on your Michigan Main Street activities. So this is really focused on having nimble action strategies and being able to pivot when necessary based on economic changes in your community. So how many of you participated when National Main Street was here? I believe it was in April. So many of you. So you're aware, rethinking this Michigan Main Street model, and these were the transformation strategies that were developed for Selen in particular, attracting technology-based businesses to the downtown, tapping into the captive market of potential customers that are living in the downtown area, and expanding sales and service to meet their needs, and then focusing on making the district family-friendly, not just for children, but also the aging population. As we walk through the best practices, I think you'll note areas that support these transformation strategies and how we can weave these transformation strategies into your work with the RRC best practices. So what is RRC all about? We measure and then certify communities that integrate transparency, predictability, and efficiency into their daily development practices. So this program focuses on supporting the concept that business, talent, and place are all connected. Business needs talent to succeed. Talent wants to live in places that are vibrant. And place needs business to be a successful place. So for fiscal year '17, RRC is focusing on assisting communities and building capacity. It's the only program of its kind in the country. I've gotten inquiries from other states on how they can bring RRC to their state. So it's a really unique way of doing business. It allows communities to chart their own path for growth based on the best practices. It's not cookie cutter. It, it's, it works with you. You don't have to follow stringent best practices. So with redevelopment ready communities, what is it? Ultimately, technical assistance program. It's that third-party review of your plans, your processes, policies, and practices. It's a melding of traditional planning with economic development. Neither one are done in a vacuum, but oftentimes in the past, planning staff, economic development staff, maybe haven't talked to one another. This is supporting the alignment of planning and economic development. Again, it's that talent-place-business connection, and ultimately, it's a certification. And I think that it's important to note that you have to see the value of your community participating with redevelopment-ready communities. We're not going to come in and solve all of your problems. We can't do the work for you. It's really a self-help program. We'll definitely provide the support to get there, and it's not cookie cutter. There are many ways to accomplish meeting the best practices. It's about what's best for your community. So this is a map of the communities that we are currently working with. We are working with 49 communities of varying sizes across the state. There's definitely a concentration of communities in southeast Michigan as the RRC started with the Michigan Suburbs Alliance. So they were focused on inner-ring suburbs of Detroit. So many of those communities that participated with the MSA came over when MEDC acquired the program in 2012. We have currently six certified communities. Allegan, Boyne City, which is a master level Main Street community, East Point, Lathrop Village, who participates with Oakland County Main Street, Roseville, and Ypsilanti, who's an associate level Main Street community. And we also have additional Main Street communities formally engaged with RRC, Grayling, Alpena, Manistee, Grand Haven, Dearborn, Lansing, and Howell. So there's really good alignment between participating in RRC and Michigan Main Street and seeing some success. We are, we follow a set of six best practices, and we'll touch on each of those just really briefly. The best practices document is available on our website, and it's detailed with links and examples and pop-out boxes that sort of go into detail on, on some of the best practices. So best practice one focuses on community plans and public outreach. So it evaluates your, your, your plans and how well your redevelopment vision is embedded throughout those documents. It also assesses how well a community identifies and engages diverse group of stakeholders. So what's important? Master plan, capital improvements plan, all required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Parks and Recreation Plan, required if you want to obtain DNR funding through the trust fund or recreation passport. We focus on implementation. Do you outline goals, actions, timelines, and responsible parties? We never encourage communities to plan just to plan. This is a plan to take action. So I think with Michigan Main Street, you're very familiar in working with action plans and developing those work plans for the four pillars. So this is something that is easily supported by things that you're already doing. We focus on the importance of capital improvements plans with the infrastructure needs of many of our communities. It's just absolutely essential that you're planning and budgeting for future projects and making sure that those plans are coordinating with your budget. Best practice two looks at zoning. So we take an in-depth look at the community's zoning ordinance and how well the regulations support the goals of the master plan. So your master plan outlines your general vision for moving forward, and the zoning ordinance really supplies the teeth to, to get those projects done. Best practice three focuses on the development review process. We're looking at review policies, your internal and external procedures, project tracking. We're also looking at your website to determine how readily available your development information is. We're in a 24/7 business world now, so having your information available online is increasingly important. Best practice 3.1, that site plan review process focuses on predictability. Time is money for developers and for residents. This, having your roles outline timelines and tracking projects and having a predictable experience is good for a developer coming in and doing a major project, or for a resident looking to put a new shed in their backyard or build a fence. It's, it really affects everyone. Best practice four focuses on recruitment and education, and that's for elected and appointed officials as well as staff. We're looking at ongoing education and how are you sharing information? Do you have an online application for open positions? And it turns out, you guys absolutely do already. So I just want to reiterate this, this may sound like a lot of work, but there are already items that the city is meeting. I looked at your application today. It's great. Very straightforward. There's a nice application. There's a description of each of the different committees and commissions. It's really well done, so great job already. Best practice five focuses on redevelopment-ready sites. We're looking at how a community identifies visions and markets priority redevelopment sites. This is a cornerstone of the program, and this is a different way of doing business. We're asking communities to identify individual sites, prioritize them, do the preliminary development research. That's gathering background information that you can put together quickly. Visioning, if necessary. What sorts of development would you like to see on that property, and what's allowed by the zoning? Identifying potential funding sources. What is your community willing to negotiate on? Maybe it's, you're willing to discuss brownfield tax increment financing. You're just identifying the proper funding source for, for that site. Maybe it's a streamlined development review process. That's also an incentive. Time is money. We're asking communities to package those sites and then market them to developers. The traditional way of doing business, community is waiting for a developer to propose a project. The RRC approach is the community is doing that outreach and marketing those opportunities to developers. And the traditional way of, community input occurs after the city receives a proposal. RRC is really encouraging that proactive community engagement. So when a project comes in that meets your development vision, that project is readily supported by the community, and the developer can at least have an expectation that it will move through the process quickly. Allegan is one of our certified communities, and they've had really great success with a few of their downtown sites that they've packaged and marketed for redevelopment. So this is a small blurb that they have on their website, and then if you, they also have a link that takes you to the property information package that outlines some more detail for a developer. They've had really great success. I encourage any of you who may have questions to reach out to their city manager. He's a great advocate for the program and, and can talk easily about what they've done. And last but not least, best practice six focuses on community prosperity. So we're looking at the goals and actions a community has outlined to improve their overall economic health, as well as how the community markets and brands itself to create community pride and investor confidence. So many communities that we've had go through RRC and receive an evaluation struggle with best practice six. Economic development strategies might be very broad, not actionable, never have developed a marketing strategy, may not have a strong brand. I noticed with pulling into town with your pave it forward signs for the, the project out front, what a great way to kind of market and try to turn that into a positive with the construction. So you're already doing a lot of these things. And if you think about it, economic vitality and marketing and promotions are two of the four Michigan Main Street pillars, so there's a good chance that you're meeting many of the criteria associated with this best practice already. So what's the process? So we require that community attend the complete best practice training series, which you've already done. And then we ask the community to complete a self-evaluation. So that's a check-in. It's available online. It's really answering yes or no questions, providing links to your planning documents, maybe to your applications. And that gives you a really great idea going in of what you're missing and what you might need to be working on. And then we ask that the community's governing body adopt a resolution of intent to participate in the program. And then that is all submitted through the regional CAT team specialist, and they work with us to determine completeness, and then the community is in the pipeline. So I know that you mentioned that you've heard from developers that Selen is a great place to work with. We interview developers and other stakeholders just to see if the process actually happens how it's outlined on paper. And we get really great feedback from the developers, and honestly, most of the time it's positive. We do ask, you know, if someone has gone through the process and maybe wasn't approved, if they would like to talk to us. They often have really good suggestions on how to streamline. We review the plans, the policies, the documentation, and then we put together a report of findings. We then have our advisory council take a look at that, and our advisory council is made up of public and private sector experts that weigh in on the program and, and each report. We come back, we present that report of findings to the community, and then we ask for another buy-in checkpoint, that the community's governing body adopt a second resolution, just outlining the desire to proceed with the report's recommendations. And keep in mind, the recommendations outlined in the report are simply recommendations. There are many different ways that communities can achieve the best practices. It's really just up to the community to demonstrate how they're doing so. So then you're on the path towards certification. Communities are working to complete RRC best practice criteria that are missing. We do ask that the one point of contact submit quarterly progress reports, just to keep RRC staff informed of the progress you're making. That can allow us to identify ways that we can assist you with achieving those missing criteria, and then also keeping, you know, your council, you up to date on, on the progress that you're making. Once a community accomplishes all the criteria, certification is awarded. I do often get asked how long it takes, and that varies. And we don't have a time limit. It's really a matter of, are you making progress? Allegan completed all of the criteria in nine months, and I think Roseville maybe took the longest. They were about two and a half years to get everything done. And, and we're not necessarily concerned with the timeline as long as the community is making that progress. So what's the value of RRC? And I think you have to see the value that comes with having a third-party review of your policies, practices, and plans. We kind of liken certification to that good housekeeping stamp of approval. It's a signal to developers that your process is streamlined, it's transparent, you're efficient, you've got the plans in place and the means to get there. It's also an ongoing partnership. This isn't a, a program or a way of doing business where we hand you a report of findings and then we walk away. This is an ongoing relationship, and we provide support and assistance to achieve those missing best practice criteria. A bonus is that technical assistance match funding is available to any community participating in RRC in order for them to achieve missing best practice criteria. We've completed or are working on a variety of projects. We're working with Lansing to develop a form-based code for their downtown. We've assisted with capital improvements plans. We've assisted with training, marketing, and branding strategies. Really, as long as it is helping a community move forward towards certification, we'll consider the project. That TA is very flexible. Another bonus with being a certified community is that both Mishda, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation give a preference to applications that come in for our limited funding to communities who are certified, with all other things being equal, and, you know, with the project meeting our program guidelines. But there is that preference. We will also help market your available sites. We put together Opportunity Michigan Dealbooks that we've taken to state conferences as well as to developer events nationally. We maintain and update that info with you. We do cross-marketing. We've held developer matchmaking events where we will invite developers to your community that may have never worked in Selen or are interested but just are uncertain. And we take, we give it, it's really the community's opportunity to kind of sell yourself and take this group of developers to different sites that are available for redevelopment in your community. We also market the sites on third-party websites like opsites, and we also use Zoom Prospector. So there's a lot of marketing that goes on, and it's really trying to just put communities available sites out there. That's our Opportunity Michigan book. It's also available online if you'd like to, to check that out. Any questions? That's a lot of information and quick presentation.
Let's actually, I'm assuming there's quite a few questions from Michelle from City Council. I'm going to actually start at this end, and we'll work our way around. Mr. Har, do you have any questions? And please make sure to use the microphone again. I appreciate that.
Yes, okay. Thanks. One question to start. So you've mentioned, you've talked about the connection to Michigan Main Street.
Yes.
And also that Michigan Main, by, by already doing some of the Michigan Main Street programs that we may have fulfilled a lot of the criteria. So is this a program that, like Michigan Main Street, or Selen Main Street, would be very restricted in geographical area? I mean, so Main Street covers not the whole city, but just a very small important portion of it.
That's a great question, and a very significant difference between Michigan Main Street and redevelopment-ready communities. We're looking at the community as a whole. Our focus is on your community-wide plans. We do take a look at your downtown plans and some of the things that you've worked on for Selen Main Street, but no, we're not restricted to just the Main Street district.
That's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Har. Ms. McClellan.
She stole my question.
So Main Street will still exist as it is now?
Yes.
It's just going to team with, with what?
With RRC. Yes, yes. We're trying to build bigger and better for both programs. We do see some alignment with what Michigan Main Street does to really support the capacity building at not only the municipal level, but at the partner level. Some communities don't have staff or the capacity really to, to do things at the city level. So Michigan Main Street, several of the communities do the nonprofit model. It, I believe, does Selen do nonprofit model? Yes. So, so it's a unique way of, of getting things done. So we're really interested in seeing that, that collaboration between the partnership of the nonprofit as well as the city.
Thank you. Ms. Dillon?
I'm actually still trying to digest the information, so I'm going to defer my questions for right now. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. CEO?
I noted in your example for Allegan, the property was owned by the city of Allegan. How do you incorporate privately-owned property into your program?
Very good question. So we encourage communities to package sites that are, the, the low-hanging fruit are really the city, the municipally-owned sites. So we really encourage communities to reach out to local property owners and package sites for willing property owners. The challenge, there is certainly a challenge for an unwilling or absentee property owner. And we have brought in actually Peter Allen. He's a professor at the University of Michigan. We've worked with Peter and his students to come in and do development feasibility studies. And he has actually worked with several property owners that have been somewhat reluctant or have held on to their properties, and, and they've become somewhat blighted over the years, and, and really worked to get them to package those sites and, and show them and make them available. So we do have some resources, but we always encourage communities to package the sites from willing property owners for us to market.
I noted that you have a fairly rigorous process to become certified.
Yes.
Once a community is certified, do you go back then and recert them at any point in time?
We do. Certification lasts for three years. And then I mentioned the quarterly progress reports as you're working towards certification. For the certified communities, we have them complete bi-annual progress reports, and honestly, we touch base with all of them on a regular basis. We have a strong relationship with the communities participating, and we're, we'll then reevaluate them at the end of the three years. And as they're going through the bi-annual progress reports, they're recertifying that they are still meeting the best practice criteria.
When I formerly worked for another city government, I remember being pushed to apply for grants, federal grants.
Okay.
Everybody thought it was free money, but it required a lot of staff time to complete reports. Are you familiar with the reports that would be required under this program?
I can get you that.
Do you think that's something that would be too burdensome?
It's, it's going to take a great deal of reporting and reviewing, I think. And I don't know if it's too burdensome, but that's kind of what the question we're asking you guys, you know, is that not a, outweigh?
And, and we do get that question a lot, you know? It's, it's a no-cost technical assistance program, but there's certainly time involved for staff. And again, I would turn to your, your Michigan Main Street partnership where potentially your, some of your committees could take on some of this work. It's not all left with the city staff. And I think it's really important to note that this is really capacity building. When you're documenting your internal processes, ideally, in the long run, it's shaving time off of the, the work that you have to do. So ultimately, it's a balance, I think, with the amount of work that's put into it. But hopefully, we're getting to a point where we're building that capacity at staff level.
And the indelicate question last. I imagine there's a subscription fee to begin, no?
No charge, no cost.
No annual costs?
No cost associated with participating in RRC at all. The trainings are free, and they're open to anyone. We don't charge for the evaluation. The, the cost to the community would definitely be the, the staff time to participate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gearbaum?
Mr. CEO, may I just, I'm reading over this, over my shoulder because he asked all the When we have this type of assessment or get the certification, what advantageous aspects are there for getting funding? How would we actually, if we're looking at funding for roads or something like that, how would that help us prioritize?
Great question. So we are, so I mentioned that Mishda, both Mishda and MEDC have preference for communities who are certified for their funding rounds. We are working to have conversations with MDOT, DNR, other agencies to see if they'll get on board. We're saying that the certification really is a signal that your community has their plans in place and, and you've planned for the future. As far as infrastructure, are the best practices, as well as the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, require that communities have a six-year capital improvements plan? So checking that plan, making sure that it is meeting all of those criteria outlined, I think is a key in moving forward. We did just host a funding round through Community Development Block Grant. It was only available to communities on the low-to-moderate-income customer list, but one of the requirements in order to be eligible, in addition to being on that list, was to have a six-year capital improvements, or to have a capital improvements plan. So I think it's a good way to double-check.
And how would you take an inventory of what we currently have? Would that be something that we are expected to pull together, or?
So it's kind of a mixture of our research and information that's provided by, from city staff, and that self-evaluation that I discussed that you have to submit to become engaged. It asks a lot of questions about, okay, do you have a master plan that's been updated in the last five years? in the last five years? If you do, please provide the link. So it's not, the city doesn't have to go through and, you know, essentially evaluate yourself, but it's getting a general idea. So those links and that document will provide most of the information we need.
Okay, and then you provide us back feedback as to?
We do.
What gaps are there?
Yes. And it's a really simple scorecard that we put together in the report. Red, you're completely missing some element. Yellow, you might have it in place, it might be outdated. And then green is you're meeting the best practice criteria.
And so there's no expectation that we would hire some consultant or whoever to help us assess that or whatever?
No, 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 no. We, our team does that. We have a team, we're a team of three right now. We're adding an additional staff person August 1st and we'll be hiring one additional planner as well, so, to meet the demand that we're seeing for RRC.
And when you mentioned matching funding?
Yes.
What would be the process in order to get that type of?
It's really, there's no application required for the technical assistance. We, RRC has technical assistance match funding. So basically, it's a conversation between the community and the planner that you're working with. And you bring in the project and our technical assistance consultants develop a scope of work that is then approved by the city and then we move forward from there.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yeah, thank you. I like grants with no application process. Could you just send us some money? You've mentioned quarterly reports.
Yes.
That's come up a couple of times. If I understood it correctly, those are only required until the city becomes certified?
Yes, and then it's biannual reporting.
And when you say biannual, is that every two years or every six months?
Twice a year.
Semi-annual.
Biannual, yes.
Okay. All right. And what would typically be contained within a quarterly report?
So you'll see when you, when your community receives a report of findings, I mentioned it's the scorecard items. So anything that's green, we don't, we don't ask about in the quarterly progress report. We're just asking for a status update on any items that were marked yellow or red in the quarterly progress report. And sometimes you may defer working on, maybe you're working on a master plan update. So you would note that we're working on our master plan update. We anticipate completion such-and-such date. We're holding a community input session here. Outline the staff or board or commission responsible and an expected completion date. It's fairly straightforward. Most of our progress reports, depending on how well the community scored on that first evaluation, are less than four pages. And then we ask a few fill-in-the-blank questions, just where could we assist you with technical assistance? Have you utilized any of our guides that are available on our website? And then we do ask about available redevelopment properties. Have you identified or prioritized any additional sites? And have any sites turned over since we last had a progress report? So they're fairly simple.
So do you have certain expectations as to how frequently a site ought to turn?
Oh, no, there's no expectation on how frequently. I think every site is different. Some sites turn over relatively quickly and some languish for years without turning over. So no, we, and we just really encourage communities to identify those sites, prioritize them, and package as many as you would like while participating in RRC. For certification purposes, only one site is required to be packaged.
Okay. And when you use the term "community," you're talking about the city limits as opposed to?
Yes, yes.
Sometimes we use "community" as in a bigger, broader.
Sure, yes. I'm talking about the city limits.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I open it up for additional questions, Riley, we discussed, of course, the redevelopment readies community program and other issues today. Did you want to make any comment about this, this evening from your perspective as mainstream managing director?
Yeah, I, I.
Why don't you come up to the table if you wouldn't mind, Riley? I'm sorry. May pull a chair in between Mickey Joe and Todd. No, no, that's my mistake.
Yes, I actually did attend RRC training like Mickey Joe and Todd did last year in Traverse City when it was up there.
Great.
And I did help implement it with Grayling at the time. And I really think it is a, it's a great tool for cities to use to attract potential developers and stuff in that sense. So I would highly recommend moving forward with this process. And I know you guys have done the application already too, right? You've done it before. So, no, I'm talking to the city, right? Or, why, I didn't know. Yeah, Todd might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaum. So we did about three years ago before they revamped the program. And so we were.
Filled out the application.
And submitted it. And basically, the response we got was that we were short on a master plan and I can't remember what the item was, but as far as the public process and that type of thing, which I had a hard time with because I didn't, I mean, we have a very public process. But any case, but now you've since revamped it.
Yes.
Night and day, I believe. So, but yeah.
I think you bring up a good point with our application process. We really weren't getting the information that we needed to move forward with communities. So I feel like we did miss out. The way that we're bringing communities in now into RRC is that attending those training sessions, completing the self-evaluations, really getting a good idea of what to expect and then adopting the resolution at the governing body level. It's a little bit more organic rather than, hey, we fill out an application and we're scoring based on this system. It just works out a little bit better, I think, the way we do it now.
Additional questions for Michelle or for Mickey Joe or Riley? I'll start with Mr. Hart.
Yes, so I'd be interested in hearing more about how you, the two of you have experienced RRC and Main Street groups working together in a community in the, under the umbrella that Main Street works. How can that be, how is that expanded and how does that work?
So I think Boyne City is a really great example. They're a master-level Main Street community and they're a certified redevelopment-ready community. And they, I think there's really great alignment with public participation at the Main Street level as well as at the city level. The economic development strategies. Boyne City, I can't remember the name of the group, but they have a group that is the Economic Vitality Committee of Main Street that is the economic development arm of the city. They handle that work. So there is a great partnership between those two groups, between Main Street and the city staff. And I think with marketing and promotion, there's just a natural fit. We do look at a unified marketing strategy that covers the whole community, but I think that building off of what Main Street does is highly beneficial. And I think there's a lot of Main Street programs that identify available sites in their, in the downtown district and can really be an asset in starting to package those and develop community vision for those sites.
And to go on to our business development team, which is the Economic Vitality Team, we actually have a work plan together to look at vacant properties downtown. And right now, we're in the process of revamping our website and we're gathering on information to put that on our website. So when people come to the community and do research, they see that research part of it. I know David Rhodes is actually helping with that and John from the Chamber is also part of that team also. So, might be a fun team to join.
And I think it's all about leveraging those partnerships and not expecting, you know, city, city staff to maybe take all that on or just your Main Street director, but really leveraging the partnerships that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ms. McClellan.
So the RRC would then kind of tag along with Main Street to do what's outside of the district that is set out for Main Street, is that correct?
Yes.
So you would, I mean, I would assume if you have a team, a business development team, but they can, they're restricted to just the Main Street, but we're talking about something that's, you know, on the other end of town, would there be a separate person that, or would staff be? How, I guess I'm confused on how, like, would there be another business development team that would just kind of tag along with Main Street or?
Oh, I'm not certain how exactly that would work. I think it's really building on the plans that have already been developed, the work plans that have already been developed at the Main Street level and the relationships that are there. And maybe your, maybe the business development outside of this, the Main Street district, who handles it now? Is that just the city? Yeah. So you'd be working, there'd be that partnership, that collaboration between Main Street and what they're doing and what the city is doing as the whole community.
Anything else, Mr. McClellan? No. Ms. Dillon, did you have a question?
No, I think my questions have sort of been answered mostly by others.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Seale, did you have something else, sir?
I'll defer to Mr. Gierbaum.
Just kind of wanted an understanding of how some of the other communities that have implemented this, how did they do it? Were they starting from scratch or have you always been using some other kind of group that's already been in place to expand from that?
So I wouldn't say anyone has started completely from scratch. I'll go back to Allegen as a great example. So Allegen's committees, boards and committees really bought in to the RRC best practices. And Rob Hillard is their city manager, one man, really, he did take the lead on a lot of things, but assigned tasks to boards and commissions. He also worked with Positively Allegen. It's their economic development group. And they really took on a lot of the site identification and gathering some of that information as well as the economic development strategy portion of the program. So I really think it was, you know, leveraging those existing groups. I think Boyne City did the exact same thing and relied heavily on Main Street committees to assist with meeting some of the best practices.
So really more in volunteers than necessarily staff were doing this?
Yeah, it really, it really depends on the community. I would say, you know, Rob with Allegen did do a lot of the legwork, but was able to defer tasks to those volunteer boards and committees when necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rhodes, did you have anything for Mr.?
No further questions.
Very good. Any additional questions? Mr. Campbell, please.
Questions, but just some comments. And so, I mean, some of this, these practices, we already do, a lot of them, maybe most of them. But they're not all in planned form and that type of thing as this program wants it. And big reason, part of this, certainly, I think it's a very valuable program, but I wanted to present this to council to see, you know, because we would have, we have some level of resources to allocate towards accomplishing this. And so, once we do the self-assessment and get that return, that's gonna give us a better understanding of what exactly we're gonna need to do. And that will even better define the resources we'll have to commit to doing that. Maybe a little, maybe less. You know, we've done some things in the past. You may recall Mayor, when he, we had the task force from EDC, actually it was a combination, EDC, TIF, and LFA folks to look at redoing our TIF development plan. And so, again, like I say, we already do a lot of these things. So, again, this is just our way of kind of presenting and saying, is this something that council is okay with staff pursuing at least the evaluation part to see what level of resources are we gonna have to allocate to move forward?
How long would the evaluation take? Proximate? Do you need an internal evaluation?
The self-evaluation?
I think it would just matter some time with staff, I mean, how I'm doing it. This is not the right time of the year for me to be taking that project down, unfortunately. Given that there is no time crunch, it would be better after the audit, you know, where we have time that I can sit down with Gary, because it's gonna require a lot of Gary's time and Gary is very involved in this under project. So I think once we have the time, Gary and I could probably sit down and with Riley probably do and go over what we have and it would be, you know.
And it might be great when your new community assistance team specialist comes on board. We could, someone from our team and the community assistance team specialist could come down and work through some of that self-evaluation as well.
Very good. I, my personal opinion and I personally want to get feedback from the rest of my colleagues on council. I think this is, first of all, I appreciate your time, Michelle. That was a very thorough presentation and an excellent PowerPoint. And I think you did a marvelous job addressing questions and concerns from council members. I think that this has the potential to be a very valuable program and be beneficial to the community. I think it's something worth pursuing. I agree with staff that an internal self-audit or evaluation is prudent, but I also concede to Mickey Joe's point that this is not the most ideal time of the year for our city treasurer and business ambassador to take the lead on that with an audit from Plant Moran forthcoming. So I think at the conclusion of that, working with folks from MEDC, MISTDA, Michigan Main Street, our own Main Street and staff to conduct a self-evaluation audit and then to report back to us as quickly as possible, once that self-audit is complete, I think is appropriate and probably the ideal first step. But, starting the opposite side of the table, what do you think about that, Mayor Portem Rhodes?
I believe that it's most likely a worthwhile program also. I did have one question that occurred to me as Todd was talking. If we get into the process and decide that the potential return on investment doesn't seem to be worthwhile, can we decline to move any further?
Yes, you can. We outline, we, we being the MEDC and the city, sign a memorandum of understanding at the beginning of the process and either party is free to leave at any time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gierbaum.
Yeah, I'm fine with the assessment. I agree that this is not the time of year to do it, but having that inventory just for our own knowledge would be appropriate and perhaps maybe even some of the administrative staff could help and do the initial checking, whatever it is, and then work it with Mickey Joe or whoever to get additional information. But I think this is a good way to, we should always assess these opportunities because it is funding that we may be able to get better.
Mr. Seale.
It sounds to me like it fits in very well with the business ambassador position. I'm very sensitive to what Mickey says about maybe not being the opportune time, because like my previous question alluded, I'm sensitive to about how much staff time things like this take up. So I think it'd be a worthwhile program to engage in at the point that people feel comfortable with devoting the time to do it and I think it would help us in the long run.
Ms. Dillon.
I agree that it's something worthwhile that we should pursue. I do think, though, that we should establish some sort of a timetable as to when we want to start exploring this and, so it's just not a never-ending process.
Well, just to be clear, Ms. Bennett, you're suggesting, and I'm not objecting to this, in fact, I agree, that you would begin the process of a self-evaluation at the conclusion of our annual audit, is that correct?
Well, quite two of these processes include information that I'm gonna need from Gary in office. And I would say at the end of the, I'm not reporting that project. When we're done with doing the reporting and he's done doing the inspections and that, then I would say that we would probably have more time. But these extreme, you know, time-consuming, and as you all know, our other projects, so I would think this would be a good winter project, hopefully, you know, first quarter of next.
Okay, late fall, early winter. Okay, very good.
When development is.
Gotcha. Is there a submission timeline?
No, we are rolling. You can come in at any time. I will say that we do have a pipeline right now of communities, so it won't hurt you to wait and come in when you're ready, when it's more convenient.
Very good. Ms. McClellan.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with it, with the time constraints taken into consideration.
And Mr. Hart.
Yes, staff time permitting, I think this is a very worthwhile endeavor.
You've got consensus. You feel clear about what, what the direction of council is? Okay, very good. Michelle, Mickey Joe, Riley, anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, I just want to thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate your time very much. Well, if there's nothing further than on redevelopment-ready communities, we transition to the public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make common or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments for the work meeting? There are no citizen comments, then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 7:23 PM. Moved by Gierbaum, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. If we say nay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1796.97]